Welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting, February 19, 2015. Some housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we would like to ask that any member of the audience that has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. The consent calendar. Items one through three have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item three, fifteen PD 002. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on this item is final unless the party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning and Community Planning and Development Service Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through three that staff would like removed from the consent calendar? Any items planning commissioners would like removed? John? Item one?
Move for approval, exception of item number one.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items two and three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item number one, Steve. I mean, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the minutes and as I recall at the last meeting, there was considerable discussion of items regarding items that are on the regular agenda this morning, but it says none in the minutes. And I thought some of those minutes were very pertinent and germane to the discussion on the two following items. Am I looking at that wrong? Yeah, it's the February 5th minute.
Okay, that was our shortest meeting ever. It was literally within just a couple of minutes.
Two minutes.
Oh, was it the previous meeting?
Yeah, I think you were talking about the previous meeting.
I apologize. That's correct. All right. Move for approval of item one.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we'll begin the consent calendar. Item number four, please.
Good morning. Item number four is a final plan development to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a casino and to allow a mini warehousing storage facility located on property on the northeast corner of Campbell Street. Property is owned general commercial district, which is conditional use is an on-sale liquor establishment and the mini warehousing storage. Campbell Street is identified as an arterial street. Right here. You'll notice that the closest residential is to the northeast and it's on the north side of Highway forty-four. Properties located on the northeast corner of Campbell Street and Center Street. Currently, the property is void of any structural development. The applicant is proposing to construct a seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot strip mall and within that strip mall will be a two thousand twelve point five square foot suite, which will be is being proposed as a on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a casino. The applicant is also proposing the mini warehousing storage facility. It's a total of eighty-seven units on the east side of the property. The applicant is also requesting three exceptions. The first being that to waive the screening and fencing requirement for a mini warehousing facility. The applicant is proposing to fence the north side of the property line. However, on the south along Center Street, the applicant is proposing to provide an evergreen landscape buffer in lieu of the fencing. Regarding the security, the applicant is proposing lighting and cameras, which is what they usually use at their store warehousing facilities. That should provide the security intended by the zoning ordinance. And the landscape buffer, as long as it's provided along Center Street in front of the units, should provide the buffering from neighboring properties. In addition, the proposed commercial building on the west side of the property should provide the buffer to Campbell Street. The applicant is also requesting an exception to allow twenty-five foot wide parking aisle in lieu of thirty-foot on the north and south side of these buildings. The parking ordinance requires a thirty-foot wide aisle in lieu of parking spaces. Twenty-five foot aisle, the applicant has been able to demonstrate that vehicles could make it sufficient turning radius for vehicles to make it around those ends. And the end units along these are smaller units, which you wouldn't be able to back a car into, so that most likely wouldn't be a lot of traffic blocking that those areas. Third exception that the applicant is requesting is to allow to waive the materials requirement for a mini warehousing facility. In lieu of what's required, they want they would like to provide steel, vertical steel siding. This is similar to what they currently have on property that's to the east that was previously approved through a conditional use permit. For the same reason that the applicant's providing the landscape buffer, as long as it's an evergreen buffer, it should provide buffer from Center Street and something to Again, the example of what the mini warehousing should look like. This is a layout of the suite being used for the on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a casino. The stipulations of approval will be that the on-sale liquor establishment would operate in conjunction with a casino. The applicant has indicated that they have the pot of gold on the property to the east and they'll be moving that liquor license and casino into this proposed suite. So that being the only other on-sale liquor establishment in the area, won't be there anymore once this gets built. And the fact that Campbell Street is a collector arterial street on the city's major street plan and is an established commercial corridor, staff recommends that the on-sale liquor use be approved. The applicant is also requesting a or proposing a eighteen square foot digital reader board sign and the planning commission has requested that the that we bring forward any proposals to ensure that the location is suitable for this proposed types of signs. It's in compliance with the sign code and it's located along Campbell Street, commercial corridor in the city. Additional signage that will be on the buildings. This is taking a look at the photo that the applicant submitted of existing mini warehousing that they also runs in the area on the adjacent lot. This is taking a look at the property, looking north, looking towards Campbell Street to the northwest. This is looking to the north and east. Looking east along Center Street, notice the pot of gold right there. Looking property to the south, southeast towards Campbell Street and to the west. Staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with stipulations as noted in the staff report. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have and staff is ready for any questions.
John? Oh, I don't see any question.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made for approval and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Item number five is a conditional use permit to allow a cellular communication tower. Yesterday, before the end of day, the applicant submitted a request to withdraw the application. Staff recommends that the planning commission acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal.
Motion's been made to acknowledge the request to remove the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Number six?
Madam Chair, item number six is a proposal to change the ordinance regarding the planning The ordinance change is simple. It reduces the number of members from ten to seven and that's essentially and it removes the, well, it simplifies, I think, the references to the wards. The mayor is here, I think he would like to to speak on this proposal. Oh, well, that's all I really had to say. It's a pretty simple change to the ordinance and I'm available for any questions if you have any for me.
Sam?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today and I want to thank you for your service to our community. What started this conversation, this conversation began several years ago when when I took office, we had approximately eighty-six boards, commissions, and committees in Rapid City, which is a lot of boards, commissions, and committees for a town our size. And out of respect for the community, for our citizens, for businesses, for developers, for for employees, and for board members, we chose to take the the step to start consolidating our processes. We consolidated nine appeals boards down into two and we consolidated many of our other boards, commissions, and committees and we now have in the forty-two, forty-three number range for our boards, commissions, and committees. We have three quasi judicial boards that I can think of in the city of Rapid City. We have the Human Relations Commission, we have the city council, and we have the zoning board of adjustment. It is my strong belief that the zoning board of adjustment over time has become too disconnected from the planning process and in my opinion, it is part of the planning process in many ways. And we should consider adopting the model that we do in any other in in many other communities across the state where we have zoning board of adjustments and the planning commission be the same set of people. What this means is you will take on a tremendous responsibility. Hopefully, it won't lengthen your meetings too much, but the way it would work is is that when you get to the end of your regular commission meeting, you would adjourn and then you would reconvene as a zoning board of adjustments and then you would be operating as a quasi judicial board and your decisions per state law under the zoning board of adjustment could not be appealed to the city council. It goes directly to circuit court and that's an awesome responsibility and you you need to decide whether you want to take that on or keep the process as it is. There's really two ways to go about this. One way is is to have an ordinance change where the zoning board of adjustments, where you keep the planning commission at ten members and you and continue to have the same number of people on the zoning board of adjustments as you have now, but you have the you have all planning commissioners appointed to the zoning board of adjustments. Or what you can do is is do this, which is a which is a bigger step and that is to do a complete merger. And what it doesn't require a reduction in the size necessarily, but staff is strongly recommending based based on the rules of zoning board of adjustments that you not have a ten-member zoning board of adjustments because of the rules of how they operate. So staff recommendation is then to have a seven-member planning commission. There's an upside to that, there's also a downside to that. Bottom line is is that my goal here, and I hope our goal is to is to have our planning commissioners sit on the zoning board of adjustments and I'm okay with however we do it, whether we have keep it too separate, have the mayor appoint all zoning all planning commissioners and have an ordinance that stipulates that, or you do a it's cleaner to do a complete merger, but it's also it also means if you do a complete merger and you follow through on the ordinance recommendation that three of you that are currently on the on the commission would would no longer be on the commission, although there are other ways to to serve as well. So I'll stand by for any questions you might have.
Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you answered most of my questions, but for for my lack of knowledge, could you explain or give me an example of what the board of adjustment, what type of items do they? I'm not familiar with that process.
I can answer that question. The board of adjustment and neither so could Steve or Eric for that matter. The board of adjustment considers variances to the zoning regulations. A lot of those are setback variances to reduce the setbacks to their property. We see ones for we just saw one on Tuesday for a variance from the paving requirement. On a commercial property, we see variances to the parking regulations. They review variances to the sign code. So that's primarily what they see. Anybody can jump in if they're thinking about other variances that the zoning board sees.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple follow-up questions. Why why the number seven? Again, what's what's the magic about number seven and what is what does quorum become with seven? Is quorum four?
Yes.
So ten quorum equals a quorum of six, seven equals a quorum of four. Is there what was the other magic about the number seven?
Well, to follow up on what the mayor said, the zoning board right now is five and under state law, the zoning board is to be five unless the planning commission serves as the zoning board, then it's a then it's determined by how many people are on the planning commission. I think seven was a compromise between ten and five. I think that's how that number came up.
And then just my last item I noticed on your on the on the one regarding the the planning commission, it talks about reappointing three members every year, so the same number come off every year? You need to change it to two instead of three?
To two or three, yeah. That's a good catch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
I've been a recent addition to the zoning board of adjustment and one thing I learned quickly there, there's a rule that if you have five members on that at the meeting that four are needed for a variance. If you have four, that all are needed to vote in favor of variance or else it fails. In this case, if we have if we combine the boards, what happens to that requirement? Because I think it's a little different than the planning commission where you just basically need a simple majority.
That's right. Under the state law, to grant a variance or to take affirmative action, the board needs a vote of two-thirds, at least two-thirds of its members. So seven people would be five. Five people would need to vote in favor.
Would that change the planning commission rules?
No, no, that would just be for the variances.
Essentially have a sort of a separate agenda under this thought?
Yeah, I think that's how it would work, like the mayor proposed, have the meetings. I think it would make sense to have the meetings one right after the other where the zoning board of adjustment takes place after the planning commission and would have a separate agenda. Or, yeah, I guess we'd have to work that out, but but it would be clear to the applicants and to the board that here's when you're voting as the zoning board of adjustment, here's the vote that you need.
You might note that the Painton County Commissioners right now have this set up in a similar fashion. They function as the zoning board of adjustment. Before their county commission meeting starts, they actually convene as the zoning board of adjustment. The rules are in place, as Carla explained. They then adjourn that meeting and then they go into their regular meeting. And the reason they do that is, let's say as an example, that someone comes before us with a conditional use permit and the only way we can grant that conditional use permit is if they obtain a variance to parking, a setback, a screening requirement, anything that's identified in the land area regulations, fencing, signage, out of chapter seventeen. So it serves a purpose to have the zoning board of adjustment meeting first to see if that variance is granted, because we really don't want to go on the books granting a conditional use permit if we in turn then later deny the variance. One of the things that you may have noted, and Steve, you can give a lot of additional information on this, when you sit as the zoning board of adjustment, there's criteria set forth by state law that we've adopted into our ordinance that must be met before you grant it. An example would be if someone wants to reduce a setback to add on another stall to their garage, you have to look at specific criteria that may or may not be met as a part of the zoning board of adjustment. One of them that jumps out to the planners all the time is reasonable use. Is a two-stall garage already reasonable and is a three-stall garage just too much? You see a lot of these already as a part of a plan development. The difference is when you're reviewing a plan development, you can go to the character of the neighborhood. Does it fit in with what's already there? Reasonable use may exist, but if there's a ravine that separates this property from the neighbor or some other form of screening, is it going to have minimal impact? You could grant it. So we try to give people the direction they need to submit the correct application, but at the end of the day, you will be putting on two separate thinking caps as a part of the zoning board of adjustment versus the planning commission and we'll we'll be here to help direct you as we're going through that.
Eric has a follow-up.
This is just more of a concern on on the numbers going from ten to seven on the planning commission. The I'm guilty of this as anybody, not everybody can make every meeting. You know, today, I think we have seven people. So you I just worry that we won't have a variety of voices if we limit the number on the planning commission too much, but just because of life, you know. The last discussion on this, two meetings ago, I wasn't able to make it because my wife went to Texas and I couldn't find childcare for that between school, you know, point. And that it happens to everybody. So I I think the direction this is going is is a good thing to consider and I have no issue with that. I just have a little bit of concern with that number.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So if you look at the ordinance, it still sets two alternates to be seated at every meeting. And knowing now that quorum goes down from you need six down to four, I think we're going to always have the quorum that's needed. And again, if you go to just having the different personalities and voices, that could be problematic when you're sitting as the zoning board of adjustment. And as was noted, that is a quasi judicial decision, so sometimes having that smaller group to sit and and discuss those issues out makes for more precise decisions.
Steve?
If I get this thing on. If you had ten that sat on the variance board, how many would would have to be in favor in that instance?
Two-thirds, so that would be seven.
So three could back out and so we drop down to seven, it's two, so not much of difference. And I I guess I'd be kind of in favor of probably going to the seven because I watch how smooth everything goes at the variance board. The discussions, you know, with with five people there, it it moves a lot quicker. The more people you have, it kind of, I think, sometimes hangs it up. And a question I would have Vicki is, if we do that, instead of having two alternates, could you have three? That way you'd have a because he's right, in a variance board, that happens quite a bit. It's more important to get to a variance board because the fewer people you have there, more have to be in favor. So if I'm missing two people, everybody's got to be in favor for them. They have the option to use at the variance board where if we're all not there, they can move it to the next one, two weeks later. That happens quite a bit and that's why I was asking about, could you say three instead of two?
Vicki?
I'm not the author of this ordinance. It's certainly something that we we can discuss and consider. I think that John Pinkard can attest to the fact that when you are an alternate and there is quorum, you know, you you get those that are reliable that are here at every meeting and that does become more problematic. But it's certainly something that, you know, if that's what it takes to move this ordinance forward, I think we can we can consider that.
I think the difference between the variance board here, though, we call alternates in, usually they've called all of us and we see if we're going to be there or not. Variance usually only the 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 alternates usually show up if they're needed. Very rarely do I have an alternate sitting there waiting on the variance board. And the other thing that I'd like to say about what the mayor's proposing is, you know, there's a lot of similarities between the boards. What I like best, I think, about being on the variance board is it's quick, like here too, just so you guys know, it'll last anywhere from ten to thirty minutes max usually. We very rarely do we run past that, so they're similar. The difference being is when you get somebody in front of you, it's more of a conversation. You're visiting with them, they're telling you what they want, staff shows you their stuff, and then you look at the criteria here. You're trying to help them as best you can, nine times out of ten, so when you're when your decision's done, you feel like you've helped somebody. I mean, you've you've it's it's final to walk away, not always happy because sometimes you, based on the information we have, it's just not feasible. But I would bet nine times out of ten, we come to some But I would bet nine times out of ten, we come to some sort of compromise. It may not always be what they want, but you can sit there and you can compromise and come up with a, a solution for them. So I would tell you here that if you do that way, I think you'd be satisfied. I mean, you'll enjoy being on that committee. I love being on the variance board. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I agree, eighty-six is a lot of commissions. We've had that chat before. I, I really like the idea that we're going to have a more manageable number. So, I guess I'll just start at the, the top of the ordinance with, I concur, I think, with another comment that was made earlier. Having served here the most part of a decade, if not longer, it took me three years to understand what in the world our work was. And I stayed on. The mayor asked for another appointment, and I stayed on because I thought the comprehensive planning that the city did was really important. And I'm guilty myself, and I don't know how many other commission members actually pull out the comprehensive plan as we make decisions that come forward from staff. But I know the staff reads it, so I'm hopefully comfortable with that. I guess my point is, it takes a little bit of time on the learning curve to understand what our responsibility is as a member. And I see the replacement curve as suggested. Somebody noted that you can't do three every time. I tried to figure out from the ordinance language how that works. So I drew a timeline, and I started appointing and reappointing, and that needs to be addressed, I guess. Or somebody just needs to say, this is who's gone, and this is how many will be appointed. So we have staggered terms, so we don't take everybody off the board with good experience and skills. And I'm satisfied that the language says that the appointments to the planning commission should be those with experience and skills necessary. But what I find out is, over the years, a number of people have been appointed to this board, and I learned from all of those different backgrounds and experience in the decision-making that we do here on the planning commission. For that reason alone, I would be a strong advocate that the commission stays at ten members. It's not about quorum for me. It's about being able to have those people that understand construction and architecture and planning and, and everything else that this community relies on in the formulation of that comprehensive plan, so that we do the right job for the people. And so, just personally, I like the ten. And I liked it, since we didn't talk about seven, when we went through this in January. I was comfortable with this because first it meets what the mayor has talked to us about reducing committees and commissions. But I also felt comfortable that there are a number of people on here that serve on that committee and can guide this commission and help us understand. I learned two things this morning. One, that Steve says, we're here to help, but I think we're here to protect the comprehensive plan as well in the city. And that we need to have a higher quorum. So, I think the higher quorum is more easily solved with ten, because we regularly have seven members. It's rare that we have fewer than seven show up. So, my vote is in for leaving it at the ten. And there's another reason I believe at ten. Although I believe in reducing the committee's work and combining committees to do the work, people may have noted that over the years, there's just less and less participation by communities. And that's shown up in the number and percentages of people that show up to vote. And I think that that contributes, not that they don't want to come to vote, but it sure adds to the language that they just don't trust government. Here are the people that really show up every day, try to make the best decisions for the community, and involve ourselves in those, improving the community. Those that stay home and don't vote, I'm not sure what they think about, but I know what they talk about. If nothing else, just read two cents. Which is more than it's worth. So, what I would say is, I would hate to see us work through this ordinance and assist the community in less participation. Even though I know it's hard, and I know it's hard, the mayor's told me this before. It's hard to get people to sign up, good people to sign up and come here. But we need those skills and experience from different, various backgrounds in the community, and we need those people to be serving long enough on this community that they understand the comprehensive plan part of it. So, I also just wanted to put in that I like the county's method. I think I mentioned that last time. I think the zoning board should meet first, so that if we can take care of the public's business at the planning commission meeting, then it's done, instead of having to meet second and then put them off for two weeks or three weeks until our next meeting to do their business. I may be wrong on that. It may be too soon after the zoning board for the planning commission to take up their business, but if I was, if I was in that boat, I think I'd want it to get done all in one day if I got up early and came down here. We talked about, and I don't see in the ordinance, I think in the presentation, we were asked about vetting new members and passing that up to the mayor and council, and I think, did we say we weren't comfortable doing that? So, good. Apparently that got left out of the ordinance. I did go back and look at the minutes from January twenty-second, and not very many of those comments are in there of that discussion. So, I'm kind of going through my minutes, and I hope I get done here pretty soon, so the mayor only has to stand up one more time. I think the quorum thing gets answered for me today in earlier discussion. So, what I would like to propose, and it isn't a motion yet, I think we'll hear back from the mayor, is that the ordinance speak to ten and merge. And that, that specifically we meet as the zoning board of adjustment first and the planning commission second. And that maybe some, I don't think that the language is contradictory that one from each ward, but no more than two. I mean, I understand that's weird, but I don't think it's contradictory that we cannot find good people, two from each ward, with various skills, background, and the ability to serve this community on the planning commission and acting as the zoning board of commission. So, I guess those were my comments. I'd certainly like to see both the combination of the zoning board to the planning commission as it's been, and I'd like to see it changed to ten, or left at ten members and acting as a zoning board. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mayor Quaker.
Was there anybody else in line to speak? Because I can wait until...
Okay, then I'll, okay. The planning staff wanted to speak? No?
Just a point of clarification then, John. If you want to keep it at ten members, are you then saying that two alternates are okay? Because we had heard discussion that you wanted that bumped to three.
Two?
Ten and two. Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you. I mostly agree with you, John. Well, no, we can compromise here a little bit. Maybe nine's the right number, because then you have your easy two-thirds of number six on the appeals board. I'm with Eric. I'm very guilty of not being as present here as I like to be or as I used to be. That just has to do with my own personal schedule. It is a big commitment. I do enjoy being here. I'm a little bit concerned about the additional commitment, but I think the, the pros of all of this outweigh the, the cons. You know, the one thing I liked about the number seven, and this is kind of hard for me to say, because I don't want it to be too personal, but sometimes I think less is more. Maybe there's greater quality in less numbers at times. But, I don't know that, that outweighs the value of having a larger voice though as well, I guess. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? Is that maybe you have, if you have seven high-quality members versus nine or ten, where that gets diluted down, which one's better? I don't know. But, I do, I do get a little bit concerned about quorum. So maybe nine is a good compromise between seven and ten. And the, the other item, John, I guess on the, on the ward issue, this doesn't really pertain to me, because I'm the three-mile individual, but the, I, I think more open language is better, because what, what happens if, would you rather have to coerce somebody in? I don't even know what wards are where, so we'll just say, I don't know. I'm going to pick. Is there a ward ten? I don't know. Let's say in ward ten, nobody wants to, to be on the planning commission, so then we are going in, we're digging for somebody from ward ten, who really isn't dedicated or doesn't have the desire to do it, where maybe there's another person in ward two that, you know, really wants to be part of the process. And so, maybe that adjustment in language seemed a little bit more open to flexibility, but still with the intent to try to, I think the, the intent of how I read the language was to first try to get the diversity of multiple wards, but if not, then it can be open to more than one person from whatever ward that may exist. So I'm, I'm wondering if we limit ourselves by saying we got to have one, or we got to have two from every ward. I'm fine with it, however this goes down, I'm fine with it. Just a couple of more thoughts, and this is really silly, but the agenda, so are you going to have one meeting start at seven and one start at eight? And what if one ends at seven fifteen? Or can they be on one agenda concurrent to each other in their public advertising?
Vicki.
That's, that's all I have to say.
You know, whether they're on two separate sheets of paper or linked together with titles clearly defining when one starts and, and what the items are on the next one. But, the standard is, is that if the zoning board of adjustment is heard first, the planning commission will start immediately following the zoning board of adjustment, and we don't put a set time on that. We would just notify the public that they needed to be here at seven AM, because there will be times there won't be any items on zoning board of adjustment. So we'll go straight into planning commission.
Jan?
Thank you. I just, my only question is, if we held them both on the same day at the, at this relatively the same time, would that satisfy public notification if the zoning board of adjustment decided something to go forward? Then the planning commission met, and it wasn't on the planning commission's agenda, then has the public been notified that they need to be at the planning commission meeting instead of the board of adjustments meeting? That's it.
Vicki.
Madam Chair, thank you. So there's very specific guidelines for notification for both zoning board of adjustment and for planning commission. Your conditional use permits, your plan developments, rezones, comprehensive plans, et cetera, all require legal notification requirements. We'd follow the procedure that we follow today. If someone's seeking a variance, they may not have an item associated with that variance on planning commission. Those letters would go out, it would notify the public, the time of the meeting, the name of the hearing, and the location of the meeting, same as it is now. If someone were to come in to get a variance to a land area regulation, and then we'd have a subsequent conditional use permit later on in, on the agenda for a conditional use permit to allow that oversized garage, as an example, they would have two letters that would go out. One would say, join us for zoning board of adjustment for the setback discussion, and stick around, there'll be a planning commission meeting for, to allow an oversized garage for this same property, for this same request. So I think that the notification will be something that won't be an issue.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, I concur with Andy. Nine and two gets you. Seven and, seven and two just doesn't get the diversity. And then secondly, I guess probably I'd, I just think that so long have we always said representation from the ward, so we have that geographic. And Andy's point is really well-made, I think. You know, geographic doesn't answer who's the best to serve up here in every case. But I, but if I lived in a ward and I didn't, and I had an issue that came up that involved me personally, and I didn't have like a ward member I could look at in my presentation or, or whatever, I think I'd feel bad. So, I'm okay if it's only one, and I'm okay if it, you know, takes four people from ward two. So, that I'm good with. And I'm also as good with nine. I just think seven is too low. I just don't think the diversity of thought, skill, and experience comes to this board, and it's worth the extra effort to dig a little deeper and find some people who'll say yes. And those final comments, done. Thanks.
Mayor Quaker.
Nine is fine, nine is fine with me too. I think all, it's also, when you have a quasi-judicial board, I think having an odd number is, is probably important. I want to, to commit something to you too, is that I, I don't know exactly what this version of the ordinance says. I haven't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what this, what this one says, Carla, about whether the board would be reappointed if we did seven or nine members. Can you answer that?
The way I drafted it was to have, was to require everybody to reapply and be reappointed, just because that was easier when you're reducing the size, instead of just picking people to take off. That's how, that's how it's drafted in two sixty oh three oh.
So let's talk about that for a minute, so you understand what my perspective is on that. The reason that I'm pushing this new process, because I believe that our planning commission is perfectly situated to be the zoning board of adjustments, as the planning commission makeup is now. So, you would not have to go through paperwork and fill out another application. What we have on file would be just fine. And it would be my, it'd be my intent, unless you rob a bank between now and then, to, to reappoint everybody that's on the planning commission now, minus the number of whatever you end up choosing. So, nine makes it easier for me. I don't know what staff thinks about it, but nine makes it easier for, for me. And I see no, I see no harm in trying the number nine. And, and then when reappointments come in October, then me or whoever would make the decision at, at that time, and maybe there would need to be an ordinance amendment, but I see no harm in going with, with nine. I also see the value in what Andy and John are saying about representation on this, on this committee. Remember, this, the zoning board of adjustments is a quasi-judicial board. And I talked to somebody who had, who appealed a, a decision a while back on the zoning board of adjustments. It cost him $7,500 to appeal a decision to circuit court. It's expensive to go to court. So, we're, we're giving, giving this board a tremendous amount of authority. The cost of appealing to the city council is, is a piece of paper and maybe three hours of your time. And so, so I see a value in, in nine in terms of representation and having diversity of, of thought as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, that would be, my comment is similar. I, I hesitate not to have one from each ward, really, because it's, it's like the city, when you're on planning commission, it's like the city council. If somebody comes in here and suddenly there's six people from the west side, two people from the south side, and nobody from the north side, and you're on an issue that's affecting the north side, there could be a difference of opinion about what, what, what goes on in that area. So whether it's one from each or two, whatever, I don't, I don't care, but I would like to see at least one, one person, because I think somebody mentioned it here, the public doesn't trust the government. And suddenly you tell them, nobody from your side is represented, only everybody from the west side is represented, because they have smarter people over there. Who made that decision? That better people come from one side of town or the other? That's going to be, I can see that already, so the trust would be gone. So I think it's very important that we be very careful about not having at least one person from each, and there's five wards, by the way, Andy. Thank you.
Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I just basically, as a city council member, wanted to weigh in, and unfortunately for all of you, I just recently run, finished watching Sons of Liberty on the History Channel. So, representation is very, very important, and it's what this country was built on. So, there are five wards in the city of Rapid City. The way it's currently written is to have one representative on the planning commission from each ward, I think represents the ward in our, in our city, and gives that fair representation. The rest of it, you know, if it's a mixture of the three mile, all the way out to the three mile, and you open up the language to that, that's fine, because that encourages that city growth that we're all going to. But I really do think, and if eventually we do end up with ward six or ward ten, I think the planning commission needs to be adjusted at a time in order to actually have the representation from each individual. the representation from each individual ward of at least one representative. That's just my opinion as a city council member. The other clarification I did want to make is, because there were some, there was some talk about members being here, and the number seven was being thrown out, but I didn't hear, sitting here this morning, the clarification that it's not hard to get seven people from the Planning Commission to here, but the clarification should be made, it's not always the same seven. So that's why I think the number is so important, and to allow that number to be extensive, because each individual person does have those family and business and, you know, life-altering things that keep them, like illnesses. But if the seven can get here, that's not always the same person, and I just wanted that clarification made. That's why the number is so important. Even if it's the board of adjustment, it may not always be the same seven people that show up. So, and, you know, as far as the Planning Commission, and you guys have to make the decisions, yeah, the number of you that want to meet is very important, but I do think that the qualifications need to make sure that there is representation from each ward. Thank you.
Carla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to what Amanda just said about extending the range all the way out to the three-mile jurisdiction, state law allows us to appoint one person from that, from that zone. So I just wanted to address that. The ward, taking out the ward representation, that was, that was a decision that I made, not because I disagree with anything that you all have said, but because there's five wards going to seven people is different than when there's 10 appointees and there's that many more, more people on the board. It's easier to get somebody from every ward. I don't have an argument to change that way, and if we go to nine, if you decide to go to nine, we can sure keep that language in. If we go to five, you could sure keep that language in. That's a decision that you all can make. And I did want to address, somebody asked about the discussion at the January 2nd meeting, or 22nd meeting, about the Planning Commission vetting the members of the Historic Preservation Commission and the Air Quality Commission and the zoning board. That's kind of where we started. Based on what the conversation was at that meeting, it was clear that the Planning Commission didn't want to play that role, and that's why you don't see an ordinance. We took that direction, and we're leaving those two boards the way they are. I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
I also like the idea of retaining ward-specific representatives, and it's a lot easier to do that if you have nine, nine people. If we do that, though, because one of the things that I think was a factor in the change, if we do that, we should probably put, look at putting some language in that doesn't boot you off the commission if you move wards or redistricted. Because that isn't, while it might be fair to do that to an elected representative, I don't think that's fair to do that to a volunteer board member. So keep in mind that, that was, I believe that was one of the factors in not having ward specifics, so we just didn't have to deal with, you know, exactly where people lived. It was more regional. And I will tell you, from my perspective as mayor, at city council, you know, when we bring appointments forward for any board, commission, and committee, our council members look at that. They look at, they look at that ward number, and they, and they look at fairness and representation, and if, and if, and if they perceive that it's not fair, then that becomes an issue in the appointment confirmation process. But I, I just wanted to share that with you. I'm just fine with keeping ward-specific representation, but we do need then to put something in there, so that you don't get booted if you move across the street or get redistricted.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a few comments. I appreciate the variety of people that serve on this Planning Commission. I think it's essential. And I'm probably one that's least associated with construction and those type of things, but I represent the population, the general population in the community, and I learn so much. But I also feel I represent the other part of the community that isn't as knowledgeable about construction and those type of things. And it took me a year to learn all the little ins and outs of coming to meetings, but I appreciate all of the learning experience I've had, and I've enjoyed working with all the people on this commission, because they're thoughtful, polite, understanding, and open-minded. And I think that's what's important to this commission. And I want to thank the members. Now, John.
Thank you, Linda. Gosh, that's what I was going to say. Actually, what I'd like to do, and if the commission finds it worthwhile seconding, then this would be some guidance to Carla, maybe. I don't know whether you want to bring this back, but I guess I'd make a motion for consideration of the restatement of the proposed ordinance, that if everyone likes nine and two, nine members and two alternates, I like that. So I would propose that change. The language in the paragraph, "Whereas the ward requirement is contradictory and difficult to fulfill," I'd like some different language there that doesn't say contradictory, so somebody down the road, 10 years looking at this, says, "What were they thinking?" Well, we thought it was contradictory, but we don't know what that meant. And "but is not required." I think the ordinance maybe should only deal with what is required, language-wise. The one per ward as a minimum, and then let it go from there with the other nine would be the language. I'm going to make it easy for the mayor. I've got a real long tooth up here. So I volunteer to be one of the alternates, so you can get to nine in a hurry. That's, that's not part of the motion, but it won't hurt my feelings, Mr. Mayor.
I was going to say, get rid of the...
You don't get out that easy, Andy. I know state law or ordinance deals with it, but I read it through, and if I missed it, Carla, I apologize, but I really think quarums for both the Planning Commission at the nine and two and acting as the zoning board of adjustment ought to be restated in the ordinance, just, just so. And you can deal with that on the legal basis or whatever. And so, I think everything else in there is, as we talked about it, and we've had good discussion, I certainly appreciate that. And I most appreciate all the different viewpoints, both in the previous discussion in January and this morning, trying to get this right. I'm interested in one thing at that, this point, is that it was my honor to serve this community, and I hope that, when I leave this board, that we've improved service to Rapid City, and that's the goal.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I'll give it to you. Okay. Then, John, do you want to speak? I'm... Pickard.
I just want to say that I agree with a lot of the different viewpoints up here, and it's been a great learning experience for me, being here for the past seven, eight months or so. And I learn something every day that I come to this meeting. It's been real great. There's a lot of smart people on this commission. But just for clarification, if the Planning Commission became nine regular members and two alternates, would the zoning board of adjustments be seven members and four alternates?
It would be the same, so the zoning board would be nine members as well. And Madam Chair, if I can just clarify the motion, I think, based on what you said, we'll bring it back next time, so that we can make sure that it's in the form that the motion reflects and that everybody reflects.
Are we acceptable with withdrawing the motion and bringing it to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor.
Thank you. Also, if the motion maker would be willing to add the language in on moving people, or if we could just, it'd just be understood that it would include that, because we don't have, I don't want to have, I don't want to have to deal, or we shouldn't, I don't want the mayor and council to have to deal with having to boot a planning commissioner if you guys move, you just finish out your, or you're redistricted, you just finish out your term, if that's okay. And then also, you're, I don't want you to leave, so you're not going to get off that easy, so.
I just want to clarify. So we're just going to move item number six to the next meeting?
And seven.
And seven. Item six and seven to the next meeting. Move to the next meeting? There's a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
To the next meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Subway.
Motion remains second to adjourn meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion passed.